All set.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the July 15 Town Council meeting to order. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call by Clerk Samino, please.
Councillor Berwick.
Here.
Councillor Connors.
Here.
Councillor Flaherty.
Here.
Councillor Hume.
Here.
Councillor Mackin.
Yep.
Councillor O'Brien.
Present.
Councillor Ringus.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Here.
Councillor Sasha.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. And we're going to begin the meeting, but first, a moment of silence for Laurie Melchioro, who tragically lost her life on June 17th. I had the pleasure of knowing Laurie and oh. Did I lose you? Hello?
We're all here.
I don't know what happened to my, can you see me?
Yep.
My computer just cut out. I can't see any of you. Okay, so my apologies. We're going to begin with a moment of silence for Laurie Melchioro, who tragically lost her life on June 17th. For, I had the pleasure of working with Laurie as a member of the school committee and the town council and on the partnership on substance use. She was a nurse at Flaherty at South. And she later became the Director of Nursing at all Braintree schools. And then she was a member of the Braintree Board of Health. She was involved in so many things throughout the town. She was a wife, she was a mother, she was a sister, she was a friend, she was a cousin. She touched so many people in this community. And there is a big void without Laurie, so I just want to start this meeting by taking a moment of silence for her. Thank you. And if we could have another one for all our men and women serving our country here at home and abroad. Thank you all. Okay, moving on to announcements. Item 2402420, Council President, Community Conversations on Racial and Social Diversity Equity Inclusion. I made an announcement that we were going to be moving forward and having conversations on this topic. What we are going to do in conversations I've had with the Chief of Staff and Town Solicitor Nicole Taub, as well as Mayor Kokoros, Superintendent Dr. Frank Hackett, and our Police Chief Mark Dubois. We all met last week and decided to see what the best approach was for this, knowing it is a community-wide conversation that needs to take place. So what we are going to do is we are going to hire a consultant to come in and give a workshop to the town council, as well as all department heads. School Committee may also participate in that. We have a couple names right now that we are looking into. I'm not going to, when that's known, we will put that out there and release that information, but it is, we are still awaiting on availability on some of these individuals who are the best to do this. It is the best place for us to start, I feel, as the conversation needs to start by educating all of us as councillors first. So when we do have the conversations with the community, as I stated in meetings a couple couple meetings ago, this isn't going to be a one-time conversation and then we're done. This is going to be an ongoing conversation where I feel it's best for us to be a part of this workshop so we can learn and we can be educated on how to handle these issues and move forward and have these discussions with the public. And if action needs to be taken, we'll be better equipped because of this workshop to do that. So that is where we are going. We still will have speakers lined up in the future. And as more information becomes available, we will put that out there to all of you on the council, as well as the public. Does anybody else have an announcement? Councillor Connors, go ahead. You mean to raise your hand? Oh, okay, Councillor Flaherty. It must have just jumped real quick. Councillor Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you. As the FRACs representative to the, to the council, I wanted to mention that on July 29th at 6:30 PM, there's going to be a virtual PIP meeting for the Weymouth Compressor Station. Now, PIP stands for Public Involvement Plan. And the meeting will be held by TRC, which is a construction and engineering consulting firm, which specializes in the energy industry. So TRC has been leading the cleanup process for known contamination on the site. So if you've been paying any attention to this issue, then you know that the whole site is filled with numerous carcinogenic waste materials that were left by industry that used that site previously. And so it's already a public hazard and it's critical. FRACs is really emphasizing this. It's critical for us to send a message loud and clear that we expect the public to be protected from those hazardous materials. And also how important effective cleanup is to us. So FRACs hasn't posted a link to that meeting yet because it'll, it'll be online. But they will soon. And if you look on the FRACs website, or if you follow them on Facebook, you'll be able to find it there when it's, when it's made public. And I'll try and post it too. But they're just really hoping that folks will, will turn out because this industry is really hard to get them to understand how important it is to the residents that they, that their health and safety and the environment that they live in be kept as clean as it can. And you know, if nobody, you know, if people don't show up and scream at them, they are likely to ignore those ideas. So I wanted to make that announcement tonight in the hopes that, you know, more people will tune in and be a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor. Flaherty, anybody else? Okay, moving on to approval of minutes for June 2nd, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd, 2020?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councillor Ringus, seconded by Councillor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Sorry about that. Councillor Berwick.
Yes.
Councillor Connors.
Hi.
Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Hume.
Hi.
Councillor Mackin.
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien.
Hi.
Councillor Ringus.
Hi.
Councillor Ryan.
Hi.
Councillor Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. That is unanimous. Moving on to communications and reports from the mayor and town boards. Item 01220, Council President, the COVID-19 update. I'll turn this over to the mayor's office or Director of our Municipal License and Inspections, whoever would like to speak first. We have Mary Beth McGrath and Nicole Taub here with us tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to get us started, as the latest update as of today, today we reported three new cases for a total of 907 cases, no new deaths, so our total deaths remain at 118. We are three days into Phase 3 Step 1. The largest impact for this phase, I would say, is the opening of gyms with certain restrictions in place, as well as some increased play for our youth sports, sports teams. You know, so the work of Mary Beth and her team has continued at an incredibly heightened level. I know for this circumstance, all of the gyms were contacted as soon as we received the guidelines and protocols for reopening by Mary Beth and her staff individually, so that they could prepare to open their doors to the public and have been operating fairly well. I think one thing that I've noticed, and I think it's worth saying, I think we're very fortunate that our community has been incredibly respectful of the restrictions put into place by the state and locally by the mayor. And I think that is a, in a large reason why our numbers have continued, as I indicated the last time, to trend downward and certainly heading in the right direction as we continue to reopen our community. And so with that, and with your permission, Madam Chair, I would, Madam President, excuse me, I would turn it over to Director McGrath.
Director McGrath. Hope you're on mute, Mary Beth.
Thank you, Madam President and Nicole. I just wanted to follow up on Nicole's statement. The Phase 3 Step 1 began last Monday, the 6th of July, so we're about seven, 10 days into it. And Friday, the Friday prior to that, which would have been July, no, excuse me, the Thursday prior to that, July 2nd, I believe that was, we received the guideline requirements for all of the gyms and health, the health and fitness clubs. And I made contact directly myself with each and every one of the gyms in Braintree to make sure that they had the guidelines and then contacted them again later that evening to see if they had any questions as they began to plan for the reopening. And a lot were already in the planning phase, but until we got those final guidelines, they had really no idea exactly what the spacing would be, et cetera. So we were able to get them through that. And for the most part, they're doing well. We are checking in with them. We have gotten a few complaints. And additionally, the youth and adult amateur sports, they are now allowed to play games. And that information wasn't as quickly to come forward to us as the health and fitness clubs. We received that on Monday afternoon, but I was in contact with the organizations from Thursday, the 2nd, throughout the weekend, both myself and Nelson Chan to give them updates. There are some other types of establishments or events that we're able to open up or expand in Phase 3. That would be, the movie theaters can open in a moderate capacity. AMC has not opened yet. They're still in the planning phase to make sure that they're able to meet the requirements. Museums and aquariums, although we don't have any in Braintree necessarily aquariums, but they're allowed to open in Phase 3. Theaters and performance venues, both indoor and outdoor can open, which would allow for entertainment, but there are very, very strict requirements around that. In Phase 3, the a lot of the opportunities for outdoor activities have been expanded. So the indoor recreation and athletic facilities, of course, they're able to open in Phase 3. Indoor recreation such as batting cages, driving ranges, go-karts, bowling alleys, arcades, laser tag, roller skating rinks, trampolines, and rock climbing can open in Phase 3. Sightseeing and other organized tours such as bus tours, duck tours, things like that can open in Phase 3. Indoor historic spaces and sites. So in Braintree, we do have several indoor historic, those could open in Phase 3. So there's a lot that's expanded, a lot of outdoor stuff as far as gatherings. Indoor gatherings cannot exceed 25 people. Outdoor gatherings cannot exceed 100 people. And then the social distancing and six-foot separation would still need to be followed, as well as face covering requirements.
Director McGrath, anybody from the council have any questions for either the mayor's office or Director McGrath? Councillor Mackin?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions, so I'm going to ask them both. I'm not sure if they'd both be best for Mary Beth or not. One is, I know a couple weeks ago when we were starting with the outdoor seating and reopening, some restaurants, I know there were requests regarding outdoor entertainment. And there was some delay on that. I wanted to see if we had any updates on moving that forward. And my second question, you know, Mary Beth addressed violations. What the process was for dealing with those. She did mention anonymous complaints, but um, you know, that there's a potential that could be abused by somebody. So what, just a little more details on that process, please.
Sure. So I'll go ahead and start with your first question of entertainment. I'm not sure if you're specific, if you're specifying indoor or outdoor. Okay, so I will go ahead and address that. Indoor, outdoor entertainment is allowed now in Phase 3 Step 1 under the theater and performance venues. The requirements are very strict. We haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't received through our town clerk office or through the mayor's office any requests for that. But in doing so, we would provide them the requirements that are set forth. I know that there has to be 25-foot separation from the performers and any persons in the public. Again, it goes on and on. There's a stage requirement. There are quite significant requirements around that. So if we were to receive a request, we would make contact with that individual or individuals and provide them the guidance necessary for that particular venue. Number two, the complaint system. So we take complaints whether they're anonymous or not. Either way, we have to follow up on them. We're obligated to do that because although an anonymous complaint may be received, it, it may very well be a valid complaint. So we need to make sure that we're doing a follow-up, whether or not a person identifies themselves or not. Some do, some don't. And again, we do, either way, we do that. Most recently, Governor Baker came out with a compliance measure that if there were concerns from the public about complaints or compliance on COVID requirements, that there is a content, there is, I guess, either an email or a contact number that they can make contact with the governor's office. But more directly, they have rerouted and redirected all complaints to go to local boards of health. So I will tell you, that occurred earlier in the week, I believe on Monday, when he released it in the press conference. We have definitely increased the number of complaints that we've received this week.
So just slightly more specifically, say, you know, I called up a anonymous, I say, I saw someone at this establishment not wearing a mask. No evidence to go along with it. Like, what would you guys, would that, what would you guys do with that? Is that a violation, an offense, or is that?
Well, not necessarily. So an inspector would be assigned to go out to that establishment. We do not announce our inspections. When we get there, we identify ourselves and explain the complaint to them, but we're also making observations as we're entering the establishment and looking around the establishment. And if we determine this as a violation upon entry in our observations on-site, then they are written a report either way. They get a COVID-19 inspection report. The report would indicate what the complaint was, as well as if there was a violation observed and what that is, and what the requirement would be around that. So there are, it's a progressive enforcement requirement. The first offense would be a warning that would be issued, a verbal warning. The second would be a written warning. The third are monetary fines. The fourth is potentially a cease and desist, and the fifth is court action. So that report is written either way. We just check the box whether it's written, a verbal warning, or written warning, but we're documenting it either way. And then we go from there with the establishment. If there is a violation that's determined, we do do a follow-up compliance inspection that they may generally know a timeframe around when we would be back to do the inspection, but they're not giving, given a specific date or time.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councillor Flaherty, you had your hand raised as well.
Thank you. I noticed in the reports of new COVID cases for Braintree in the last few days, on the 13th, we had five, and on the 14th, we had two, and on the 15th, we had three. So those numbers are slightly elevated. I mean, after being very low for a long time, where we were seeing zeros and ones, and I was, you know, feeling really good about how we were moving through these stages. So my question for you is, do you feel like this, you know, minor elevation is concerning as we move through these, the stages of reopening? Or do you think it's still too early to tell?
Well, I think any number other than zero is concerning to us. These particular cases are in the community. They're not in long-term care facilities. So it is concerning. And so we're definitely monitoring it because as we do start to reopen more and more things, we want to make sure that we're tracking that to see if there's any correlation between a particular establishment or reopening sector and the case, or cases.
Okay, and so you guys are taking a lot of your instruction from the, from the governor. Is that, will you continue to do that? Or is there, is there a possibility that you would identify the numbers in Braintree as being just too high? And then take steps to dial down the reopening process if you felt the numbers were, of new cases were just too high to continue, to merit continuing?
Well, I think that that would be determined with consultation of the mayor's office, with Mayor Kokoros, with Nicole Taub, and also taking direction from the State Health Department as well. I mean, we are following the state requirements for the reopening phases. But, and certainly, the state, I can tell you, is keeping close eye on communities to see what their numbers are.
Do you know, just offhand, like, how we compare to local communities with those numbers? I mean, on a day-to-day basis, are they also seeing similar, having similar experiences?
I have to admit that I am so involved and delved into Braintree that I haven't had time to look at other communities.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Flaherty. I just want to add, I, so I'm going to call on Councillor Ringus next, but if I can just, there's somebody from the public who is raising their hand. We're not in a public comment right now. But if you want to take down this number or use the chat feature within the Zoom webinar, and if it's appropriate, and we can get to your question tonight during the meeting, we will. But you can text our clerk, that's Sue Samino. Her phone number is 339-987-2726. You can call or text that number. Don't call right now because we, she is on the meeting. Again, the number 339-987-2726. Use the chat feature or email all of us at towncouncil@braintreema.gov with your question if you do not get to it tonight. Councillor Ringus, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. This would be either for Chief of Staff Taub or for Ms. McGrath. And I'm almost positive, I know the answer you're going to give me, but I just wanted to check. So there is the sports outline, which has nothing to do with the town. This is all the state, was kind of prepared last minute. A lot of youth sports thought they were going to get underway on that Monday. And then all of a sudden, at 4:15, these three phases of sports, and then the sort of the four allowances for what you can participate in came to be. Obviously, baseball is allowed to compete in the first three phases. They can't do tournaments yet, but they're allowed to participate in games. So I know that EDLL and South Branches Girls' softball were able to get their games up and underway. I know that some of the other sports, like basketball or soccer, are sort of kept in a Phase 1, where they can only do non-contact practices. And I know that that was disappointing for many families and many children because there was various basketball leagues that were going to start that night. I know that some of these kids were already dressed to play, and then all of a sudden, these things got canceled. Again, had nothing to do with our town, that was the state. But with that said, are we getting any sort of feedback from the state, how long these phases are going to last? Or when we're going to be moving through the phases? Because I know, obviously, we want to be mindful of keeping this in check. But I know there's many kids that, just from a psychological perspective, want to get back to playing the sports that they play. So are you getting any sort of inside information on this, or are we still in the same way it's been going that we're getting told last minute?
Well, much like, as you had mentioned, much like the, the updated guidelines for youth and adult amateur sports were provided to us at the last minute, and we're relaying that to our, our leagues. That's why I tried to keep in direct communication with them from the 3rd, or excuse me, the 2nd of July, once we had an inkling that they were, were going to push those out. And said, they're coming, I don't know when they're coming. And unfortunately, as you know, my complaints all along has been a communication issue with the state in that they're, they are not releasing things early to local health departments and making it very difficult for us to get the information out to our establishments in our leagues, which is the same as this. This, this was the same case in this event. And you are correct in that there are many different levels of play, whatever the type of league it is. The, for example, football, they're not allowed to operate until Phase 4. We have absolutely no date whatsoever that's been released for Phase 4. None. I don't, I mean, I would be very surprised if it happens in the near future.
Right.
But we have no dates.
Okay.
Once we, once we do, I can assure you that we'll be pushing that out to anyone that would be impacted by any Phase 4 reopening. And they will get that. If we have an inkling or even a slight hint of it, we'll be making contact with them early on to say, this may be coming, prepare yourselves. And I have to tell you, the leagues were wonderful in communicating. I spoke with them, I emailed them. They were really great, respectful, coming back, appreciated all the assistance to try and get the information to them.
Thank you. I think the second thing, like, and I think you alluded to it, the, the second big piece of Phase 3, I think for the, the everyday folk, is the fact that gyms were reopening and people getting back to. I think when hair, when hair salons opened up, that was huge for a lot of people. And now gyms are opening up. And I think you touched on it a little bit, but how was the reopening of the gyms? I know I've been in a couple so far. But it seems like, from what I saw, most of the gyms were able to comply and people, as much as it's a pain, are keeping their masks on while they work out in certain locations. I think you noted a couple violations. Was, was there any issues with that, or how is the gym reopening been going?
Well, the gym requirements are extremely, extremely specific and quite lengthy. So for example, all of the equipment must be spaced 14 feet apart. If they cannot get the 14-foot spacing, they have to, they can provide six-foot spacing as long as they put a physical barrier, non-force barrier, between the pieces of equipment. So the establishments, what, they, some of them just don't have the room to do that. So they're actually shutting down machines so that they can provide, the machine actually, a shutdown machine actually provides a physical spacing to the machines beside them. Additionally, clients, for example, group exercise, the same requirement has to be met. The equipment has to be 14 feet apart, say for spin class, the bikes, they have to be 14 feet apart or six-foot separation with a physical barrier. That's not going to happen in the spin class because they just simply don't have the room for it. The clients also have to be 14 feet apart to maintain the social distancing. So it's quite challenging. Most of the gyms are seeing a lower level of attendance in group activity or group exercise classes right now. Because I think a lot of people are still a little hesitant to come out. The main body of the gym, where people can move around, go to pieces of equipment, that, we've been seeing a lot of positive activity. Most people are doing very, very well with the requirements of face covering. Some need some reminder that although your face covering is on your person, it cannot be wrapped around your neck when you're walking from piece of equipment to piece of equipment or talking to others, et cetera. So it's a learning experience for all of us. Unfortunately, I think face coverings will now become like a clothing, a piece of clothing item that we wear every day. And I think once we get used to that, then we'll all be for the better.
And I think it'll say, that segues in, sort of, I think, to my last sort of question, and a little piggybacks a little bit on Councillor Mackin's, some of his questions. In terms of the face coverings at a, whether it be a hair salon or an esthetician type of place with, with people wearing masks, one of the things that, that I noted in the sort of these guidelines is these places, whether it be a gym, whether it be a hair salon, whatever, whatever establishment that might be, if someone has a medical condition, they can't be told to wear a mask. But in the same token, the manager of the salon can't ask them to show proof of the medical. So they have to almost take their word for it, that if they say they have a medical condition, they have a medical condition. But what happens if theoretically, I'm at the gym, and some guy comes in not wearing a mask, and they're like, oh, he has a medical condition. So all of a sudden, the next guy takes off his mask, he's like, oh, I have a medical condition. You know, it, is that establishment like, and then someone makes a complaint that no one in the establishment is wearing masks. But, you know, everyone is sort of, whether they're telling the truth or not, they're saying they have a medical condition. So what is, what's the process there? How do you protect the establishment?
Well, interestingly enough, we are seeing that as an occurrence, that, that particular exemption is being used a lot. We're suggesting, and you are right, the establishment cannot, if a person says, I, I have a medical condition, I'm exempt from this requirement, the establishment cannot ask for a proof of a medical condition or disability, whatever it may be. What we suggest to the establishment is, you may want to document that member's name so that if they're questioned on it, they can just advise that, you know, they're exempt from the requirement based on a condition that they have. We are seeing that there are a lot of establishments that are having difficulty with, you know, the majority of people are, are meeting the requirements of face covering. That's what we're seeing in establishments. But you do have a pushback from a lot of customers that do not want to wear them. And some of the establishments are finding that customers are getting very aggressive in pushing back on the requirement for face coverings. A lot of establishments have younger persons that work there, especially at night. And, you know, we certainly don't want an altercation to occur because it could, it could escalate to an altercation. So they're using best judgment. We're trying to explain to them to educate the public. It's very important that face coverings be worn because it does protect up to 80% from the spread of coronavirus. And that's what we're doing. Unfortunately for us, if we see a violation, we have to document it. But that, again, comes with education to the establishment. The establishment can also use that as an example, is that we are getting in trouble because people are not complying, which means that we may end up closing because our patrons aren't compliant. Please, you know, do what you can to be compliant. So in doing that, a lot of establishments are seeing a turnaround of the thought process that, you know, a person doesn't want their favorite establishment to close because it continued to be in violation. And so that, you know, the establishment is saying, please help us to help you so that we can stay open.
So I think that, that's the part that concerns me a little bit. So again, use the gym example. Same at the gym, the guy takes off his mask, then the next guy's like, oh, he took off his mask, now I have a medical condition, so I'm going to take off my mask. And then some other person, an elderly person is there, maybe on the treadmill, is like, I'm going to make a complaint because no one's wearing masks. And then one of your inspectors comes out. Are, is this gym going to get penalized because these people are saying they have medical conditions? Like, are you taking that complaint and saying, oh, well, somebody complained, that's now set in stone, you have a complaint against you, even though all those folks said that they have medical conditions?
Well, I'm going to use myself as an example. I am a member of a local gym in Braintree, and the owners know that, obviously, that I'm a member, but they also know what my occupation is. So I've definitely told them to use me as the example that, please, follow this requirement because the Director of the Health Department is a member here, and she may or may not be in this gym right now, and she will say something to you. And I have, I've gently spoken with some clients or members of the gym and reminded them of what the requirement is and to please adhere to it. Because because ultimately, the owner will be penalized, which means that if it escalates, that he may have to close again and we don't, we all don't want that. And those that I've spoken to have been very respectful. Fortunately, the gyms that we've gotten complaints on, staff members have gone in, done compliance inspections, and basically we announce ourselves to a manager, ask to speak with them privately, explain the complaint to them, and then can we please walk through the gym? Just walk through the gym, nobody knows who we are, walk through the gym. And for the most part, they have been in compliance, which is great. But please understand with gyms, if a person is working out and they're exerting themselves heavily, then they can pull the mask down. That is an allowance in the requirements. So certainly if I'm standing there and I'm noticing someone is heavily working out or whatever they're doing, then it's reasonable that they're not going to have their mask on. I am speaking with people when I'm in my own gym, when they're going from one piece of equipment to another or they're going from one side of the gym to another, please put your mask on so that when you're passing people, you're protecting yourself in those people that you're passing.
And so just the last piece of that, so let's say your inspector shows up at whatever. I, I think me and you work out of the same gym. So say your inspector comes in and walks down that, that sort of passageway between the treadmills at the front of, at the front there. And they see someone walking without a mask, okay, because they got a complaint. And let's say that that individual, John, had told management, I have a medical condition. So management can't stop him from walking around without a mask. Is the health inspector going to say, oh, there's a guy without a mask walking around, that's a violation? Or is he going to go ask that guy, John, do you have medical condition? Like, how is the health inspector going to treat that?
Well, first what we're doing is if that is observed, we're asking the ownership or management, are you familiar with that client or that member? And do you know if they meet the exclusion requirements? And if they suggest, the answer is yes. If they don't know, then I would gently go over and speak with the member and say, this is who I am. This is why I'm here, we've gotten a complaint. Just wanted to follow up with you, I noticed you don't have a face covering. Can you advise, is there a particular reason that that's not being utilized? And then we get, whatever the answer is, is what the answer is. If the answer is that I just don't want to wear one, then it's likely that the establishment will be, will be found in violation. If a person says, I have a medical condition that precludes me from doing that, that's fine. But the other requirement to that is they still have to make sure there's six foot social distancing. And that is also mentioned to them is although you have this exemption, you still have to six foot social distance and be very mindful of that when you're in the gym and around persons.
But there is, and what you're saying is what I was hoping for. There is some sort of an investigatory and/or due process sort of that you're following. Not just you're in violation because that guy's there and wearing it, but you're doing a follow-up.
This is a, and I'm sure you can appreciate this, this is a very, it's a very precarious position that establishments are in and that we are in. The objective here is not to shut down an establishment. We want people to continue to operate, but we need to make sure they're doing it in a safe manner. The biggest piece to the face covering is the educational piece. A lot of people just think that, well, we're just giving them a hard time and this is, but there is a scientific and necessary reason for it. It has clearly been proven, it does prevent the spread of COVID, along with social distancing. So as much as we're seeing these violations, we're also trying to educate not only the patron, but also the establishment. And then that helps them and in turn, they meet compliance. So I will admit, we have had to do some progressive discipline or progressive enforcement on establishments. And I myself had to close an establishment because we've been there six times for the same exact violation. So they have gotten a message since that. Unfortunately, sometimes a closure sends the big message home and because the next stop for us would be in court and we don't want to go there. The preferences at that establishment stay open.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Council Baraka, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to follow up on that, Director McGrath. So are the COVID-19 inspection reports, the enforcements, are those in the public record? And how are those, like, is that something that the public can access?
They certainly can if they'd like, certainly.
Through your office, online, how does, like a FOIA request?
Yes.
FOIA request. Okay, just, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else from the council? Okay, seeing none. I just want to thank you, Mary Beth, in your department. I know this is not an easy job and I know the information coming out from the state is very last minute, doesn't give the town nor the businesses, small business community, time to respond to that. So I think the, the information coming out from your office and the mayor's office to the public has been as quick as it possibly can, so I appreciate all the work. I know there's so much going on behind the scenes and you guys are working seven days a week for the most part since this has started. So truly appreciate all the work and hopefully we will get back to some sort of normal soon. But appreciate all that has been done with that. More than welcome to stay home with us. With that, we will be moving on to old business, item 20042, the town clerk proposal to create election voting centers or take up any action relative thereto. I will refer to Council Baraka, who is the chairwoman of Ways and Means for a recommendation from that committee.
Thank you so much, President Hugh. The Ways and Means Committee met on June 29th to discuss this matter with the town clerk. And in our initial meeting, two new options for creating election voting centers were proposed. So one option was a single consolidated polling location for the entire town at Braintree High School. The second option was three district polling locations. And the third option was no change, so maintain the current eleven polling locations we have today. I know Clerk Casey will provide the full council with additional details. But after reviewing the materials, fully understanding their request for the change, the committee voted four to one to recommend temporarily moving from eleven polling locations to three district level polling locations. And there are three discussion points from the Ways and Means Committee that I believe are worth stressing. And I know, again, you'll hear more from Clerk Casey. But just to let the public know and the other members of the council. So first is, this is a temporary change. It will expire at the end of this year, so December 31st, 2020 is part of our recommendation. The second thing is new for this year, for the first time, Massachusetts voters will have five ways to cast their ballots, including vote by mail, submitting absentee ballots in person or by mail, and early voting, including for the first time for the state primary. And then lastly, this change creates significant financial savings for our taxpayers while protecting the health and safety of our residents and our poll workers. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairwoman Baraka. Anybody from the, Clerk Casey, we have you here with us tonight. That's Clerk, Town Clerk Jim Casey, if you would like to speak on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair President. And thank you to all the members for having me here this evening. Now, what I'm going to do is just give a little overview of some points here that relate to some other mandates that we've had in elections and how we succeeded on those, things like those into what we will be facing with this 2020 fall election season. The town clerk's office provides a wide range of services that fall under the department's umbrella. Elections are the largest of the services provided with nearly twenty-seven thousand eligible registered voters eligible to use this service each and every election day. As a chief election official for the town, it is my responsibility to develop an administrative plan that has three basic components. A plan that is built around the mandated election laws. A plan that takes into account community events that may have an impact on the elections. And finally, a plan that can be successfully executed. And at the same time, it's not a fringe upon a voter's right to cast a ballot on election day. In 2016, in-person voting was a mandated legislative action which allowed voters to cast ballots in the state general elections over an eleven-day period. Prior to that election, I submitted a plan to consolidate the twelve polling locations for the eleven days of early voting into a central site at C. Hill Auditorium. My research at that time indicated I could expect approximately thirty percent of registered voters, well, that's about eight thousand registered voters, to take advantage of early voting that year. The election plan was designed and implemented, implemented based on the research and my decades of experience gained while working for a major manufacturing company. During those eleven days of early voting, seven thousand or twenty-seven percent of the voters did indeed vote for early voting and they enjoyed a pleasant and uneventful voting day. Twenty twenty, each time I hear that number, I associate it with perfect vision. I believe those of us who must wear glasses would think the same. Well, 2020 has not started out as the perfect year. It has changed about everything we are accustomed to doing in our daily lives. For a moment, who would ever thought they would have to wait in line for a chance to buy a roll of toilet paper, a bottle of hand sanitizers? They need to wear a face mask to carry on our everyday activities. I believe they are calling this now as our normal. Twenty twenty also has impacted how election officials need to approach their upcoming fall election season. Recent legislation changes have expanded opportunities for voters to exercise their right to cast a ballot through the end of the year. However, they have placed a heavy burden on those of us who manage these elections. Under the new, under the new election legislation, the Secretary of State's office was mandated to mail registered voters an application to vote by mail. Voters would simply complete the application, sign it, then they drop it in the mailbox. It's post-it paid, so they don't have to pay anything. And the voter does not even have to fill in a return address because it has been completed with the town clerk's address in the community where they live. In the past, to vote by absentee ballot, it was conditional on meeting one of three defined events. Legislation has changed to add a fourth event. And that event is if a voter has any concern over the COVID pandemic, they can apply for an absentee ballot. So there are two new additions of ways they can cast a ballot for the 2020 season. The recent legislation has changed and expanded voter access into early voting. For the first time, in-person early voting is now available for a state primary election. That's, that's going to be September 1st. And it's for seven continuous days. And for the November 3rd election, there'll be fourteen continuous days of in-person voting. In both of these elections, they include Saturday and Sunday mandated early voting. One thing the legislation didn't change, everyone will have access to voting on election day. And the reason for this consolidation plan. The approved legislatures gave, changes gave voters more options to cast a ballot than they had ever had before. As I said, the legislatures have added a number of administrative challenges to consider to develop my election plan. What are some of the questions an election official would ask themselves during the planning process? One I am asked by every local media before each election is, what is my estimate for voter turnout? It's not a crystal ball, I don't flip a coin of what it's going to be. I kind of look at trend data like I did back in 2016. I look at the competitors of each race on the particular ballot. I look at the level of absentee ballots that I have received to date. And for me, I look at unsolicited comments from registered voters. I come in contact with everyone each and every day. However, for the upcoming fall election, the recent legislative changes require additional questions to be asked. How many voters would take advantage of the new early voting by mail ballot? First time we've ever done this. And it's all that the application is going to be mailed out to them. They just simply fill it out, sign it, drop it in the mailbox, it'll come to my office. Based on some early research data I've been gathering from those communities that have elections in May or June, they've seen their absentee ballots actually decline slightly. However, for mail-in ballots, they've gone from a couple of hundred to thousands. And so this is something that I would be expecting to see myself. And to what level will absentee ballot requests be impacted? Now, with the consideration, a lot of college kids, and I know the council president to children have put in for an absentee ballot application. But will they be in college this September to get an absentee ballot? Where are we going to be mailing that? Now, we've been trying to reach out to some of these kids to find out, do they want to come into early vote? Do they want their absentee ballots sent to their homes and so on and so forth? So there's a lot of considerations that are all new, it's a new challenge for us.
Hey, Jim, can I just interrupt you for a second? You have a lot of great points and I think it would be useful if all these details that you're describing, can we put them out on your website as a question and answer? Because what we're faced with tonight is a recommendation to move to three polling places. So if you can talk about those three polling places and how that's going to change. But all those details you're talking about, I think the general public, that would be great information to get out there if we could.
So my point here is, is that I've done a lot of research. I've done it for the 2016 early voting. It was very successful. My research verified what I expected to see to show up. And I have spent a lot of time in researching this plan. I reach out to other communities, I look at other states that have similar type of voting processes in place to see what expectations that we can have. And what I have found that is that for us to run the elections, and we normally have done it today, the twelve different, it's really twelve reasons to eleven polling locations, it's, it's going to be very difficult to manage and it's going to be very costly to maintain those each election day. And part of that is that we have to do a pre and post sanitizing of the election, of the building itself, which is very costly. Secondly, is that...
Let me, can I interrupt you there? Because I know in Ways and Means, you did talk about sanitizing the buildings after the fact. That I believe you said a thousand dollars per location to sanitize. Where does that information come from?
I got an estimate from someone who had it done, from a smaller place, it was about five hundred dollars to get it done. I'm looking at a larger square foot area, so that's where I got my estimates from.
So if I could ask either Solicitor Tom or Mary Beth McGrath, isn't that something that our own DPW can handle in sanitizing? So the polling places after, where they're going to be, the proposal tonight is the three schools, Braintree High School, East Middle School and South Middle School? Director McGrath?
Well, I'm not really sure that we could commit those resources by the facilities division because that would all be directed through the mayor's office. But I don't know that they would have enough staff to be able to do what they're already doing now in each of the town buildings in addition to this. That would have to all be planned out, certainly.
In addition, if being in eleven different sites, I'm going to have to have some type of health agent or an election worker standing at the election door, monitoring people coming in. If they have a mask, if they do not have a mask on, they need to be gently asked to put a mask on. However, like the gyms that you talked about earlier, a person can say, I have a health reason that I cannot wear a mask. For elections, they don't have to have a reason other than to say, it's my right to vote. Anybody can walk in that building to vote and say, I'm not wearing a mask. So for me to mean that with twelve different buildings is a very difficult situation. By reducing that size to...
The recommendation is for three, so let's stick to that. And whatever gets approved tonight, if your information on that particular plan can be put out on the town's website under the town clerk so all residents can see, because I did see in here, you're specifically addressing all the details of face covering. What's going to happen? Hand raised, who is a member of Ways and Means as well. Council Carney.
Sorry, had to unmute. So I would just, just for the cleaning, I don't know if it's feasible here, Mary Beth, but it's definitely something to look into. It's a procedure we followed that the CDC allowed. If the building is closed and no one is entering or exiting, you can shut the doors for seven days, which kills the virus, and you don't have to clean. We did it in our facility where we had a fifty percent breakout. It was approved by CDC and it was also approved by the Military Seal of Command Navy, who was running the best... who was running the vessel. And basically, we abandoned, not abandoned, but nobody went on for seven days, and the virus dies, and there's no cleaning necessary. No cop.
The buildings that are normally used are, some are town buildings. So that would probably not be a reality that we could entertain.
Right, the school buildings might be feasible, though.
Right. Well, it depends upon what happens in the fall with the plan to, whatever plan that the school department comes up with, the state agrees with. And we will be also participating in that as well as far as approval. So still yet to come.
So I have three questions that have been asked by me. Am I allowed to ask them now? Or do I need to wait until the end?
Go ahead.
Okay, so one was just a question by a resident that was asked, that I asked tonight. And that is, what procedures will be in place to ensure that there's no double voting? If someone does a mail-in ballot and then decides to show up that day for voting as well? If there's a procedure in place to ensure that there's only one ballot per person or one vote?
Okay, when a person sends in, either it's an absentee ballot, a vote by early mail ballot, or they come in and vote in person during the seven-day, and I'm just going to relate my questions to the September 1st election. They'll all apply for the other two elections before that. So on September 1st, if you apply for an absentee ballot, and you've received one of these early to vote by mail ballots, well, we already have your application. That will not get accepted. Okay, if you had an absentee ballot and you came into early vote, and you already cast that ballot, you won't be able to early vote. Thirdly, if you couldn't come in on Election Day because we'll be tracking all of your voting habits. What happens is, this election, part of these legislative changes, is for the first time, they have granted these electronic poll books. So what we'll be doing is just prior to the election, we'll be downloading the state voter information system onto these poll pads. Each of these poll pads will be distributed to the 12 precincts in the three mini sites. Okay, the three district sites, they all talk to each other across town. So whatever happens at South Middle School, a relay will come back into the East Middle School and the High School saying that Mary Smith had voted. And if Mary Smith had voted by absentee already, well, a flag's going to go up, and my check-in clerk will stop there and inform her that she's already voted. And then what will happen is the protocol, if they have the warden step in to resolve that issue. So these things could happen other election also. But there are practices that go into place that we do track everybody's voting patterns that we have, whether they receive a ballot or in-person voting ballots. There are all other underlying things, but I could go in here all night talking about all of the safeguards that are in place.
Okay, that was just a question that was brought up. And then just a reminder that we had talked about PTOs and their bake sales and setting up a space for them. So I'll just happen, I'll mention that again because it hasn't been mentioned, even if they decide to do like a no bake bake sale or whatever will be allowed to set up in any area.
Okay, in this particular election, I'd be asking probably not to do it. Okay, this is something new. We're trying out with multiple locations. But if they want to set up outside on the sidewalk, not inside the building, because again, it's another area that I'd have to maintain within the building to ensure that they themselves are following the safety protocols of maintaining the six-foot spacing in between. They have some type of barrier when the person buys a bag of brownies.
Hold on, I want to have Director McGrath weigh in on this because whether this is even going to be allowed in this COVID world we're living in right now. Director McGrath, do you want to speak on that?
So right now, samples of any kind are not allowed, number one. Secondly, I would need to look into whether or not that would even be permissible to offer or to have food available. Most venues, it's not allowed, so I would have to look into that. And again, this is all very fluid. We keep getting updated documentation. So as elections become closer, they may be sending out some specific guidelines around this.
All right, and this is also like a note. So a lot of, a lot of places are doing what they call a no bake bake sale where it's basically, I'm not going to say donations, but you know, you buy a baked good that's really not there. So it's just a space for the school PTOs, which is a big front. Don't look, I see that look, Debringus. It's just a place for them to set up to be able to do one of their larger fundraisers during the election, which is a major, major financial thing for them. So
I think maybe something outdoors versus inside the building.
Hold on a second. Venmo would be probably a great tool for these PTOs to use. Just put a sign up. Nobody needs to be there that they can make the donation to the PTO. Clerk Casey, what else do you want to add?
Okay, for these elections here, there has been some success in the state legislation that have reduced some staffing levels. And we do not, as if you recall how you vote, you walk in the building, you check in with a check-in clerk, you cast your ballot at the ballot station, and then you would have to go out to a checkout clerk to give your name once again, then mark you down again, and then you would finally put your ballot into the evaluator. The checkout clerk positions will be eliminated for the fall elections. However, as part of this plan is that as we go through a 13-hour voting period, I have a responsibility to sanitize down the voting booths themselves on a regular basis. The marking pens that we have, I have a plan in place that the pen will get picked up at the check-in desk. When they, at the end of the voting, they're going to deposit them in another box, and those will be sanitized and then put re-back into circulation at some point in time. So eventually, I will need some staffing to make sure that I do that. By having these mini centers, the three different district centers, then I can have one staff working four polls than versus having 12 people for individual polls to do this task. So it would be a save us considerable amount of cost on that end also.
Jim, in their report, you talk about the stations being sanitized. How about the doors, the exit way doors? Are those going to be left open? Because if they're not, they need to be sanitized rather frequently with everyone either pushing, pulling, or grabbing whatever.
That's all going to be depend on the weather conditions. If it's a gorgeous day like it was late this afternoon, not this morning, but the foggy doors will be left wide open.
I would, I would think
If it's raining, so all of those, all of those in the health protocol and sanitizing protocol will be taken into account once I have a decision what needs to be done when we find out what my new, am I going to work with the existing one or the district level? And then I can finalize the plans. I have most of it laid out, and I'm just waiting to move forward with it.
All right, Council Ryan, you had your hand raised, then Council Ringus. Go ahead, Council Ryan.
I'm all set. I was just thinking maybe we could read the motions, and people could ask the questions on the specific motion, and we could, we've been talking about it for 20 minutes. I'm ready to vote, so.
Okay, Council Ringus and then Council Sasha.
Thank you, Madam President. So to be completely honest, this is one, like, I am very much struggling with this whole concept. I've been batting it around all weekend because we're dealing with sort of the right to vote, which Clerk Casey acknowledged, accessibility to voting, and then sort of framing that all in this crazy COVID crisis we now have going on. So it's sort of these multiple, these multiple things working against or with each other. I know over the years, we've, we've thought about sort of consolidating down polling places in the past. And we've done that going from 12 to 11. And that's something I've been somewhat supportive of, especially when we're not in the town meeting sort of area or history anymore. We've gone to six districts, and I think at some point, it would be, make sense to move to six voting places as opposed to having 11. The, the issue that I keep struggling with, though, is in moving to somewhat abruptly from 11 to three. And one of the biggest reasons is accessibility and also sort of the numbers that we might have voting. When you look at the election we have, the three elections we have coming up, they're pretty significant. The, we have a very sort of heavily contested primary season, which we haven't seen in a long time. We have various county positions that have primaries that we haven't seen. You know, when you see a primary for the Norfolk County Treasurer, like, we don't generally see those sort of elections. So it's a very sort of heavy sort of primary season. We're then going into the South Middle School vote, which theoretically is going to hopefully draw out a lot of folks. And then we have the presidential election, which there's obviously a lot of volatility on both sides, whichever way you go. So that looks like it's going to be a very high turnout race. So in sort of framing that with the accessibility and the COVID, I keep sort of going back and forth on what the right number of buildings is. So there was a question, it looked like it was posed, that I wanted to ask first. Someone chatted it in. Her name was Stacy F. So Clerk Casey, how many people do you estimate are going to be using each polling location? And how do you think that compares to sort of previous years?
Okay, the trend for the September 1st election, for this type of election, as you know, every four years, every two years, there's a different type of state primary. This year, it does not include a governor's race. The average trend of turnout over the last 10 years has been 17%. When there's a governor's race, it runs around 30%. Okay, so this is a non-governor's state primary, though it is a little more competitive than it has in the past. I'm looking at this as that, not just because of Election Day turnout, I'm looking at the new things that they've added. I'm looking at the mailing of the, in the early vote by application that we would mail them out a ballot to their home so they can early vote. They have that option, which they've never had before. I do see more people taking advantage of that. They've never had before in-person early voting for a September primary election. So I'm looking at other people to show up for that one. So I'm looking at overall, not more than, not more than one in three voters, registered voters. And there's about 27,000 registered voters. It's going to show up on Election Day, overall on Election Day, on the exact day on Election Day, on September 1st. That's going to be a lower number than the 17% I've seen in previous years. Okay, though it's going to be compounded by four precincts being in that particular center. But the volume of people going in there on Election Day is going to be significantly lower because voters never had this many options to vote. And if the state and the legislators feel that voters are going to be taking advantage of them, they wouldn't be paying all that kind of money to make these changes and to pay for the ballot and the return envelopes. The cost to the voter to vote by early ballot isn't zero. They just have to fill out the form, we're going to mail the ballot back to that voter, and then they're going to mail it back to us. Okay, so I expect it no greater than one in three overall, but Election Day is going to be much lower than we've ever seen it before for the precincts. Now, for the September 26th election, it's a dead exclusion election. Braintree has never had a dead exclusion question on standalone. And we've never had a standalone question on a Saturday. So this is like, you know, a flipper a coin. I've talked to some other communities that have had standalone elections and have had them on Saturdays. Those towns have even reduced the number of hours because the turnout has been kind of low. We're still going to have the 13 hours of early voting, of voting on September 26th for the dead exclusion question. They will have the ability to cast a ballot early, just like they're going to be doing for September 1st. So they have that option, they have the option to absentee ballot, which we already have a lot of those already because it was set up back last March. And all of those ballots that were cast since that time, we have locked up in the vault, and they're going to be eligible for this particular September 26th election. Now, when we get to the November 3rd election, I'm expecting four out of five people to vote overall on that. So we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of 22,000 people are going to be voting on that. I gotta believe we're going to have a significant amount using the early voting by mail, and they're going to show up at town hall, town hall to vote in person, which they've done in the past. So again, though we're going to have a great turnout, we're still going to see a significant lower level in the precincts. Now, for me to manage this, there is a plan. I've thought it out. We have social, I've been looking at purchase, some social distancing discs that will be placed on the floor. There'll be some signage placed in the hallways to advise the people exactly what they need to do when they come in and can vote.
We, I really want us to stay to the issue that's on hand, and the recommendation again is to go to three polling places. So Council Ringus, have you had your question answered?
That question, yes, and I'll move to the next question that I have. So one of the things, again, touched on was accessibility. So my prior two years on the council, I served in a role that Council Borica does now, which is the District 5. And I'll just use District 5 as an example. So we're moving the District 5 polling under this three polling place plan down to South Middle School. District 5, for example, 5A currently votes at Town Hall. We do have some nursing homes. We do have some folks that are, that might be in wheelchairs that reside in District 5. So going from, you know, the nursing home over off of Hancock down to Town Hall is, you know, less than half a mile. And obviously, we have other nursing homes and facilities in town. What sort of accessibility help are we going to grant to get folks to the polls? If we have folks maybe at the nursing homes, or we have folks that are in wheelchairs or are mobility impaired, do we have anything in place to help get those folks the accessibility? Because going from Hancock to Town Hall versus going Hancock to South Middle Schools is a significant increase.
The majority of the handicapped accessibility, those who visit Town Hall are mobile. They usually come in a van or in a vehicle. It's generally not walking to those distances. There are some voters who do walk to their precincts. I'm one of them. I can skip right down to my precinct right now. But again, for the current situation, we've got to look for the overall health of the whole voter population here. And that they do have, all of these people have the ability to cast a ballot in person early. They have an option to cast a ballot in, early by mail. They have an option to cast a ballot by absentee. So they've given numerous, various opportunities that they've never had before. Now, South Middle School is handicapped accessible as well as the new East Middle School and the High School. I've visited those sites, and some of these sites have been, all the sites that were used are inspected by the Secretary of State's office for elections. They have been certified. And we've, and the town has spent a considerable amount of money on some of the other polling locations that we currently use to do that. And so are some people going to be inconvenienced? Definitely are. Are all people going to be happy with this? No, there are going to be some where we have no decision, they couldn't care less. There's going to be somebody, people saying, hey, it's about time. They're thinking about our safety. And then there are others that there's just nothing I can control about doing it. But one thing I know, that having 11 sites and trying to manage that and manage the health and safety of all my voters who walk in on Election Day is going to be compromised. I cannot guarantee that they, I can control that when I'm trying to deal with my limited amount of workers to watch how people are voting. And as you said, how can I ensure that somebody didn't vote before? Because my workers are conscious. They're watching that. This is new to them to think that they have to watch to make sure somebody's six feet away. By doing that in 12 precincts, you're talking about almost an impossible task. What I've done is with a compromise, to come out with a plan that I can ensure that we have social distancing, we minimize any health impacts that we can, and at the same time, have the election workers do their jobs and maintain, ensure that everybody has that ability to cast that ballot.
So my last question, I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback sort of on that statement that you just made. And this might be a question you answer. It could be Ms. McGrath, if she's still on the line. I understand the idea that 11 sort of spread out polling places in terms of COVID now. It's more to clean if we take the $1,000 as sort of, you know, an example of what it might cost. We're looking at an $11,000 cost to sort of re-sanitize all these areas. And I think someone in here alluded to the fact that, you know, many of these buildings are elementary schools. And I think someone in the, in here alluded to the fact that, you know, many of these buildings are elementary schools. We don't know what the school year is going to look like. So obviously we don't want to have extra people coming into these buildings who are trying to phase in openings. So I understand that we want to minimize to some degree. And I also appreciate the fact that you say that even though we might have a, a large turnout overall, there might be less people sort of coming to the actual physical polling place. But now by consolid, say that, that does hold true, your prediction that there'll be less people at each polling place. In a way, wouldn't it be better to have them more spread out to keep it even less people? Because now you're taking maybe if it is two and five show up, but now we're consolidating to three places. So isn't there more chance that the COVID might spread where we're consolidating them? Wouldn't it be better to keep it sort of a little bit more spread out in terms of voter safety? And I know it's sort of a, it's a guess, it's a guessing game, it's hypothesis, I don't know.
Well, again, my review of it and understanding and seeing what other communities have done, they have done consolidations specifically for this, for this, uh, COVID pandemic back in May and June. They have done the reductions. They have seen less people show up on that particular Election Day. Again, trying to deal with 11 sites and trying to, uh, manage the social distancing zones and the signage adds additional cost to that. And then trying to get the election workers to focus on a new element that they haven't had in the past. One of the big concerns, uh, with the new legislation was, um, who do we have for election workers? And it's our season's residents, okay? And again, what, um, there was a comment back at the last meeting relative to, um, a social media post that we shouldn't have seniors work in the elections. But those are the only ones who sign up. Since that post has, um, but was put up back last month, I've had two people under age 50 who would sign up. I've also had four deaths. Okay, so I've, I'm still negative two in my polling workers. So again, it's the senior population who will volunteer, or it's not a, I can't even say it a volunteer, it's a paid position. Okay, it's not much paid, but it's a paid position. They enjoy coming out and they're the only ones who are coming out. I've recruited up at the high school in the past and I got zero response. I've gone out and tried to recruit, uh, people, it's, every time I see them, I ask friends of mine, A, do you know anybody you want to work? And if I get somebody who's under 65, I feel like I have a teenager. Because that's how the election process works. And it's not just for Braintree, it's for every community. There was, um, I just want to give you one more example. There was a city which I will keep namely, that the mayor of that city said that they are not going to, um, allow people 65 and older work on the elections. And the city clerk at that particular time said, well, I'm not going to have anybody work in the election because nobody wants to do it other than our seniors. And essentially that's what we, we have, they're a great group. They are so dedicated to this job, um, that, uh, we should be using their talents. And, uh, they do have the time, it's a 13-hour day. Not too many people want to do that.
I got it. Counselor Ringus, are you good?
I'm good on that, and I would just, as a comment to that, I appreciate that answer and I, I understand where you're coming from. Obviously, the, there's a higher risk population with some of our poll workers and perhaps, moving forward, because we have a little bit of time, perhaps we can, kind of off topic, perhaps we can sort of reach out to, with Dr. Hackett and the school committee to see if we can identify a community service that might be filled, uh, through the use of high school students or college students, if the college students may be around. So perhaps they would be an option. So you did answer all my questions though, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
All right, I have, Sasha, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Ryan, and I see Director McGrath. You want to weigh in on something here, Director McGrath?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. And I, I will tell you from a public health perspective, I absolutely support three locations. And I'll give you my reasons for that. I've worked with Jim for over 20 years and he's been involved in the election process for that amount of time, if not more so. And I've been very impressed with how he rolls out his 12 precincts to this point. But we're in a different time now. And maybe in the future, we will get back to what we will call something more normal than what we're used to right now. But fact remains that we are in the middle of a pandemic and I don't see that anything changing between now and September. So the opportunity to be able to provide fewer locations, I, this is not to inconvenience residents certainly, but it's, it would provide a more manageable scenario. Jim, he is absolutely right in that his, he, his biggest hurdle will be finding staff members to staff these sites. And if you're able to consolidate persons in fewer locations, that provides him the opportunity to have more staff members on site that can help with all of the myriad of requirements that are just associated to election pieces, but also all of the many, many, many requirements now associated with COVID and, uh, the offering of an event like this to the public. So I definitely support fewer locations. It would also additionally help when contact tracing would be a requirement. So that certainly we would need to know who was participating in the activity itself. And so if you have fewer locations, you may have a lot of people that are turning out, but it's a far manageable scenario than having 11, 12 sites to do the same thing.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Okay, Counsel Sasha, you were next.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Clerk Casey. First, let me just say that I, I've, I've only known Clerk Casey for eight or nine months now, but I've never heard him say anything other than whatever is decided, we will get it done. This is the first time I've ever heard you say, I have concerns that we can get this done. So I fully recognize that there needs to be some consolidation. I think, so I was, I was the vote against this in, in ways and means. And, and I just could not wrap my head around, to be perfectly honest with you, the consolidation from 12 to three. If we were going from 12 to nine, fine, even 12 to six, I think people could understand that, given where we are. But all the reasons that we have to do this and we have to make a decision quickly are the same reasons that people are very anxious about this. They, they don't want to go to one location at a time when they don't even want to go to the gym. They, they don't want to have everybody put in one location. They, um, have concerns about even driving, you know, having somebody drive them to a polling location. It's a lot of seniors who take advantage of, um, services to drive them to a location, but that's getting in a car with possibly somebody you don't know. And the other thing is, if, if, you know, if we were having this conversation and it wasn't a presidential season, I think people would say, that's fine, let's give it a try. If we were having this conversation and it wasn't a pandemic, people would say, fine, let's give this a try. I understand it's temporary, but, um, you know, I think people have real concerns about this. And I would just, I, I, I had emailed back and forth with, with Clerk Casey a bit about the possibility of going to six instead of three. And I just wanted to bring that up and see if that is a possibility because I, I, I do think that people have real concerns about this. And, and at a time when everybody is really anxious about this, we're talking about financial savings. And I think, I, I don't think that's the right conversation for us to be having. I get the safety issue, but three locations is a major change from the 12 that we have and I'm, I'm still a little uncomfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sasha. Counsel Flaherty, you were next, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Casey needs to make a, an answer to Steve Shasha's question about the six places or not.
I've, I've had the conversation with Counsel Sasha earlier about it. There are, some of the districts, um, they cannot accommodate two, uh, two polling locations. Some of them, uh, uh, will be very difficult to get into there. Um, again, it's still, to me, it comes down to managing my staff. When I have more people in one location, more people needing staff people, they can float from one precinct to another. When I have some shortfalls, um, with one precinct, I have more voters at it than another. This is, this occurs all the time. Again, knowing my election working staff, I've said it before, they're seniors. I, I, every election on, election morning at 4:30 in the morning, they call Town Hall and I'm there. And they tell me, I'm sorry, I have a, a medical issue, I can't make it. So now I, I'm one less person staffing that particular precinct. So now having this multi-location, when I do have that, uh, hall, which I always have, I have to have, um, I can't move someone over, so I have to remove a staff member to go and fill in that. So that weakens my ability in the office to service a, a lot of the halls that come in. So, uh, to me, it, um, going down to three, actually, my plan was to go to one. Okay, to me, this was the, going down to three is essentially a compromised plan, which I know it's workable and it's doable, um, and it's a little more challenged than a central plan. But I'm, what I'm, I want to try to stress is having the 12 precincts in separate locations is, uh, it's a recipe for disaster. Okay, and I'm telling you, you know, if you tell me to do it, I'm going to make it happen. I guarantee you that. And I, I'm just, uh, if it's Counsel Sasha, if you're hearing from me for the first time, I'm concerned, I am concerned for 12 locations, okay? I'm less, significantly less concerned on three. I think three will work, we can, we'll have the, the large volume of workers there to assist. And every election too is, I'm dealing with a lot of technology there. In every election, I have a machine go down. When they start rolling them up at 6:30 in the morning where they're testing them out, one of the machines doesn't work. I have to physically go out there and resolve that. Going to, uh, the last election I had, I had three machines down between, uh, 6:30 and 7:00. So I, I had to get around quickly to ensure that the tabulators were running before 7:00. All, all the machines are tested, certified before we, we roll them all out. But Murphy's Law says something's going to go wrong every morning. It does, I guarantee you, I, even under this plan, something will be going wrong. But if I'm in three locations, it's easier for me to deal with, you know, with, with guards with me, they'll all happen at the same, uh, building and I can resolve all three real quickly. But things happen, um, there's a lot of technology involved in today's election and it has been in the past. And so this is important that, uh, for me, from, under all these conditions, for me going in and out of the buildings, I'm going to be the biggest determinator of all, what I, if I come into 12 different buildings. So I, I can try to eliminate myself and what determinations I particularly can do. And that, again, is, is on my mind.
Counsel Flaherty?
Okay, um, so what I, what I'd like to emphasize, I think, that hasn't been pointed out or emphasized yet, is that this is, this is a temporary measure. I, I, what I expect is that there will be careful tabulations tracked about how this may or may not be impacting voter turnout. We can't, we can't not have this election, right? It's too important. This, the next three elections are all very important in this town and nationally. And, and there's risk involved in hosting them because of the, because of COVID, but we can't just not have them. You know, like we can decide not to go to the gym, but we can't just not vote, uh, or host this election. So it, it's our obligation to make sure that we have them in the safest possible way for our voters and also for the people who are working the polls. And, um, I think that the, the necessity of ensuring the health of our workers means that moving to the three locations is, is the, the right thing to do. But it's important for me to know that, that this is a, a, that this will be evaluated again in the coming year because it will expire. And I expect to review the data on how voter turnout met expectations or didn't meet expectations and use that data to decide whether this is a worthwhile thing. Because it, it would be a terrible thing to do anything that would discourage voting in Braintree. That would be bad for Braintree and I would be opposed to it. But I think we're in a situation right now where, for the health and safety of our voters and our polling workers, this, this needs to be done. And also, one item that hasn't been pointed out is that for years, elementary school administrators and parents have wanted for our elementary schools to not be hosting the elec, the elections. Because you can't turn anybody away from the polls. It doesn't matter what kind of criminal record they have. You can't turn them away. And it gives them a modicum of access to our schools where it is just too easy to imagine the kinds of nefarious activities that they might put that opportunity towards. And so I, you know, and, and finally, like, this is an issue where I've gotten a lot of, a lot of response from various, uh, people. I, I, you know, I sent out an email explaining this in very plain and straightforward terms and I heard from, um, 14 people, okay? And, um, 11 of those were, were, were supportive of it. And three were not, although one of those three, just, he wanted to do it only for the first election and then do the evaluation for the next two elections and that's just not an option. However, um, and then on Facebook, there were also posts, those are people who either wrote to me or called me. And then on Facebook, there were five comments and three of those were supportive and two were opposed. So I think that Braintree has a reasonable amount of, of support for this. And, um, that's, at the, at the end of the day, it's their, it's their vote, it's their money, it's their, their risk, it's their election. So that's why I'm going to support this, this motion.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I respond?
Uh, let me get to the counselors first if I could, because we have three more that want to speak. And so Counsel Ryan.
Yep, they can speak under discussion because I'm going to make a motion upon the request of the town clerk that the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, so would it pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 24 and Chapter 115, the Acts of 2020/11, that public convenience and public health will be better served during the September 1st, September 26th and November 3rd, 2020 elections by the establishment of differing voting centers whereby one district, 1A Town Hall, District 1B Flaherty School, District 2A Hollis School, District 2B Hollis School be relocated to Braintree High School. Two, District 3A Ross School, District 3B Braintree Yakup, District 4A Elder Affairs Building, District 4B Morrison School be relocated to the East Middle School. And District 3, and three, District 5A Town Hall, District 5B Liberty School, District 6A South Middle School, District 6B Highland School be relocated to the South Middle School on a temporary basis, so moved.
I'll, I'll second for discussion and because Counsel Ryan saved me some reading, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so for discussion, Counsel O'Brien, you had your hand raised next, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President.
Now the discussion needs to stay within the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with the previous speaker and, and I didn't, I never agreed with the previous speaker, either of the previous speakers, when they addressed the reduction to some number less than one. In fact, I agreed with the clerk that maybe going to one made sense just because we have an apathetic voting public. And it's unfortunate that we do, but we do. But when it comes to changing things like this, that apathy changes dramatically. And I don't believe 14 people represents the 35,000 or so residents that we have. However, uh, I think there's been enough of an uproar that, uh, reducing it to three makes less sense than reducing it to something like six. And the reason I even am bringing it up to six is just because of the current situation that we find ourselves in, which none of us asked for, including the clerk, including all of the elderly that clearly sadly were down three, uh, that worked the polls and that's just dramatically sad. Uh, I also heard from a young person who said that they wouldn't work the polls, but I don't see their name on any list. So I'm disappointed that, um, you know, we went and, and the Ways and Means Chair said that it was going to the district level, because it's not going to the district level because the district level would be six. But I could support a district level of six. Uh, and I will wait because I see someone else has their hand up. But I will wait to modify the motion to rename, re, retype, whatever, restate the motion to six, but I'm not going to be able to recite all of the various entities. So I'll wait for the next, um, speaker to speak and then I'll raise my hand again. Thank you, Madam President.
Certainly. Counsel Barrica, if you're not speaking either, can the rest of you mute, please? There's something's kicking back here. Counsel Barrica, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I too have spoken to and heard from many constituents on this issue and the majority once explained the situation are in favor as well, though not all. Um, and I think we all agree there are a few things that are as important as the fundamental right to vote. And I am confident this plan protects that right. The clerk, which hasn't been addressed fully this evening, but the clerk has a robust communication plan in place which will inform the entire town of these changes across multiple forms and mediums of communication. Voters who are concerned understandably about going to new polling locations- Voters who are concerned understandably about going to new polling locations, they don't have to go to those locations. They can vote by mail, they can vote absentee, they can vote early, including over the weekends and one weeknight evening. So providing lots and lots of options that voters have never, ever had before to ensure that fundamental right to vote is protected. So I will also be voting in favor of this motion this evening. I think it satisfies the critical public health needs we have and the all-important fundamental right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barica. Anybody else for the first time? Seeing none, Counselor O'Brien, back to you.
Thank you, one quick question before I move to modify the motion. The motion as it stands right now just states on a temporary basis, but that doesn't give any deadline as to what means temporary basis.
Madam President, if I may?
Clerk Casey, go ahead.
The temporary basis is December 31st, 2020.
Okay, thank you. So I am going to re-move for the motion. And I really, if it would pain me if I had to, but certainly if the Veep doesn't want to do it, I'm more than happy to retitle it. But I would move that the motion be modified to six locations rather than three. And I'm not sure exactly what else I need to do, but also, I would also like the motion to include on a temporary basis until December 31st, 2020, something more specific.
Counselor Ryan, do you want to amend your motion in any way?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Anybody else wishing to speak during the discussion part, specifically to the motion?
So, I'm sorry to say, but is it the amended motion or the motion? Because if it's not the amended motion, I'll amend it.
I don't think you, no, there's a motion on the floor. Counselor Ringus, go ahead, your hand's raised. Well, you're muted, Counselor Ringus.
Thank you. I would tend to agree a little bit, and again, I don't want to like, it's 9:04, I don't want to keep beating sort of a dead horse. I think we've had a great discussion, and this is sort of the discussion that we want to see at sort of town meetings. It's been respectful, it's been a debate back and forth, and it's a, it's a topic that's important to so many people as we go into three very important elections. I sort of tend to lean towards Counselor Shasha and Counselor O'Brien here in that I do think a reduction is warranted. And most of the folks I've talked to, like Counsel Flaherty and Counselor Barica alluded to, I think most people are okay with a reduction in polling places. And I think that's something that was coming regardless. I do think a reduction from 11 to three is a lot to take in in what looks to be three very busy elections. And that just concerns me, and I understand completely where Clerk Casey is coming from, and I understand where Ms. McGrath is coming from as well, and obviously framing this under COVID. But I would be much more open to the idea of six polling places as opposed to three. So at this point, I would not, I would not support going to three. But obviously, the motion is on the table.
Okay, so the motion, I'm gonna weigh in here now, too. So I had similar concerns prior to tonight, and there were residents who are for it or residents against it. I don't think we would be having, I know we would not be having this discussion tonight if it was not for COVID. We are in unprecedented times because of that. What I heard tonight, this is temporary. It is for the health and safety of not only the poll workers, but all the residents. And it represents a financial savings as well, going to three polling places, and that this is more manageable. Those are like four key topics that I'm hearing tonight and I read about in the information games. Plus, there are so many opportunities for people to vote. If you are not comfortable going to your polling place, if there's accessibility issues, and what wasn't talked about in the accessibility pieces, some people don't have transportation. And right now, a lot of people don't want to be on public transportation if they don't have their own means of transportation. And some of these polling places are quite far. So with that, they can mail in their vote, they can do absentee voting, they can do early voting, or they can go to their polls. There are so many options. And I will say what really, because I was not sure how I was voting coming into this meeting. I, as a counselor, it's, I'm here because the residents put me here. I listen to the residents, and I've heard from residents both for and against, mostly are for, you know, when they understand. But also, I rely on the subject matter experts within the town to provide me with the information to make an informed decision. And we have Clerk Casey here, who's a subject matter expert in the clerk's office, and Director McGrath, the Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, telling us this is the best plan. So for those reasons, I will be supporting the motion that is on the table. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, there's been a motion made, you seconded, Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
I almost want to go for the six. Nay.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Yes.
Counsel Mackin?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Nay.
Counsel Ringus?
Nay.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Sasha?
No.
That's five to four, is the majority passes. So it does pass, we will be moving to three polling places on three polling places on a temporary basis. And ask the other Clerk, Casey, if the more information you can provide on your website via email, emails to the council, that would be best served by all.
Okay, I just want to provide you with one piece of information, which is important just for the councilors, but also for the general public to hear tonight. With this, I am mandated to send a letter to every single registered voter of this change. And with that, the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee asked me to put into that mailing some additional information, maybe the layout of each of the different polling locations that show how they would proceed through this whole process, as well as some other literature to help them out. I already checked the cost of that. I can put four additional pieces of paper in an envelope and no additional cost, so I can work with you to expand the dialogue of the information you want your voters to have. So when they make this change, they fully understand it. Because I do have some signage, things that will be put in place to help them out myself. I appreciate all your concern, your time this evening. I know it was a tough one, but I truly honestly feel for the safety of the voters and the general public, this is the best option. Thank you kindly, and everybody have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, we have four items that if this council so chooses, we can vote on same night. So we have four items from the Town Clerk that require action no later than our meeting on August 4th, 2020. These items do not need to be referred to a committee. If the council wishes, we can vote same night action on these items or wait until our August 4th Town Council meeting to take a vote. They are on the current agenda of placeholders at this time. I will say, some of these, if we could move in particular on Item 20048 and 20053, because they pertain to election dates. And if we wait less than a month on those, the parties involved in those elections, both for and against, whatever it may be, it's just delaying their, getting their ball rolling to so speak, so to speak. So if we want to take these one at a time to, does anybody object to same night action? Counsel O'Brien, I see your hand raised, go ahead.
Thank you. I only see one listed as same night, it's 20049, I object. I only object to 20049.
Yeah, we're not taking, just the Town Clerk's Office items ones. The four items from the Town Clerk.
Okay, that wasn't specified.
I thought I said the Town Clerk. So 20046, 20047, 20048, and 20053 all pertain to the Town Clerk's Office. Is there any objection to any one of those? If you do have an objection, please state the number. Okay, no objection to same night action. So with that, there will be?
Madam President?
Can I do a roll call, please? Yep, roll call, please.
And also, 20047 is not going to be same night action this evening? That's taken off the table for same night action. So for roll call, for same night action, if anyone objects, for 20046, 20048, 20053. Counsel Barica? So yes, you agree to same night action?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Counselor Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
No one objects.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to 20046, the Town Clerk designation of early voting site, days and hours, or take up any action relative there, too? Did Clerk Casey leave us? Okay, he did, so we will move on to the motion, Counsel Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that upon the request of the Town Clerk, under Order 20046, that the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, order that in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Braintree hereby being required to establish, under MGL Chapter 54, Section 25B, Subsection F, an early voting site to allow any qualified voter, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 51, to cast a ballot for any bilennial state election during the early voting period. At the recommendation of the Braintree Board of Registars, the Braintree Town Council hereby designates Braintree Town Hall Cahill Auditorium as Braintree's early voting site. Further, early voting hours shall be held during the days and hours described as such. Saturday, August 22nd, 2020, open at 8:00 a.m., closed at 1:00 p.m. Sunday, August 23rd, 2020, open at 8:00 a.m., closed at 1:00 p.m. Monday, August 24th, 2020, open at 8:00 a.m., closed at 4:30 p.m. An extension on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, of opening at 8:00 a.m., closing at 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday and Thursday, August 26th, 2020, and August 27th, 2020, opening at 8:00 a.m. and closing at 4:30 p.m. And on Friday, August 28th, 2020, opening at 8:00 a.m. and closing at 1:00 p.m.
Second.
Then a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan, Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. That was unanimous. Item 20047, the Town Clerk designation of early voting central tabulation facility, or take up any action relative there. We will be taking this up at our next meeting on August 4th, no action is required tonight. Item 20048, the Town Clerk, call of the state primary election, September 1st, 2020, or take up any action relative there, too? We'll move on to the motion, Counsel Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move under 20048 that upon the request of the Town Clerk, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Council, so orders the call of the state primary election as September 1st of 2020, that in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Braintree hereby being required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the state primary election on Tuesday, September 1, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to vote at the polling places in their respective precincts to cast their votes for the following purposes, to cast their votes in the state primary for the candidates of political parties for the following offices, Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress for the 8th District, Counselor for 2nd and 4th District, Senator in General Court Norfolk, Bristol, and Plymouth District, Senator in General Court Norfolk and Plymouth District, Representative in General Court 5th Norfolk District, Register of Probate for Norfolk County, County Commissioner for Norfolk County, County Treasurer for Norfolk County, and Sheriff for Norfolk County.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan, Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Moving on to Item 20049, mayor, acceptance of donations or take up any action relative there, too? This is a placeholder, no action is necessary tonight. It will be taken up at our August 4th meeting.
This will actually be referred to Ways and Means at the end of the evening.
It is, okay. Item 20053, Town Clerk, call of the local special election, September 26th, or take up any action relative there, too? Counsel Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that upon the request of the Town Clerk, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, so orders to call the local special election for September 26th of 2020, that in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Braintree hereby being required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the state primary election on Saturday, September 26th, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to vote at the polling places in their respective precincts to cast their votes for the following purposes, casting their votes in the local special election on the official ballot for the following ballot questions. Question 1, New South Middle School. Question 2, replacement of school roofs. Question 3, Braintree High School feasibility study. And question 4, enhancing school security measures.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. Moving on to referral to the Committee of Ordinants and Rules. 20044, the mayor, amendment to the town zoning map, general business district, Liberty and Grove Street, or take up any action relative there, too? Counsel Ringus, is there a motion for referral?
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And moving on to referral to Committee of Ways and Means. Counsel, we're gonna do 20045 first, mayor request for appropriation CPA funds for the land purchase at Liberty and Grove Streets, or take up any action relative there, too? Counsel Ringus for a referral.
I would move for the referral of 20045 to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, Clerk Samino, roll call.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye, but if someone could just tell me, has the CPA met on this, or is it not? They have not met, at least I don't, I guess I'm confused. Thank you, aye.
They are meeting on July 27th, is that right, Nicole?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an advance referral, thank you.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
And Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Is unanimous, thank you. Item 20049, the mayor, acceptance of donations or take up any action relative there, too? Counsel Ringus, is there a referral to the Ways and Means?
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, Clerk Samino, roll call.
Counsel Barica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Item 20050, mayor request for appropriate RTT Morrison Elementary School outdoor classroom, or take up any action relative there, there, too. This is for referral to Ways and Means. Council Ringus.
I would move for referral to Ways and Means on order 20050.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Erica?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Item 20054, the mayor transportation infrastructure enhancement trust fund, or take up any act, action relative there, too. This is a referral to Committee on Ways and Means. Council Ringus.
I would move for referral to the Ways and Means of order 20054.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Erica?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Clerk, Council O'Brien, do you mean to have your hand raised?
I absolutely do, but I'll wait until all the referrals are done, and we'll go in. I'll ask my question under topics the Chair does not reasonably anticipate.
Okay. I, there, okay, moving on to referral to Committee on Department of Public Works. 200051, National Grid Petition, Argyle Road, or action relative there, too. Is there a motion for referral? Council Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move for referral of order 20051.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Erica?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Referral to Committee on Department of Public Works. Item 20052, National Grid Petition of River Street, or take up any action relative there, too, for referral to Public PPW Committee. Council Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move for referral to, of 200052, to the Department of, the Committee on Department of Public Works.
Second.
Then a motion made by Council Ryan, seconded by Council, sorry, motion made by Council, it's getting late. Seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Erica? Yes. Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Um, it's, just to note, the Committee on Ordinances and Rules will be meeting on Wednesday, July 22nd, at 6:30 via a Zoom webinar on order 20044, the mayor amendment to the top, town zoning map, General Business District, it's Liberty and Grove Streets, or take up any action relative there, too. Council Ringus is the chair of this committee, so he will be taking that up, as well as the rest of his committee at that point. Council O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I am here in raising my hand for a, I guess a ruling, if you will, from, because I noticed that the Chief of Staff, AKA, the Chief Solicitor of the town is on, online here. And my question is, how do we refer a request for appropriation from the CPA when we don't even know whether the CPA has anything in front of them? Because, I mean, I, I recognize that the train has left the station on this, and I know that there's a lot of kerfuffle about this Liberty and Grove, and I know this is all relative to that, but how do we refer something that hasn't been decided from CPA? I would love to have input on that.
Sure, Madam President, if I may. Assistant Solicitor John Goldrosen and I worked with staff from the Planning Department, Christine Stickney and Melissa Santucci-Rozzi, to set the schedule for the plan regarding what was referred to Ordinances and Rules this evening. The, the amendment to the zoning map, as well as the CPA approval or appropriation of funds for the purchase. Both of those items, as the mayor has indicated previously, relate to what is a larger plan and tend to work in conjunction with one another. The idea was to bring both of those items back to the full council for consideration together, given that they go hand in hand, and in order for the proposal really to work, they both need to happen together for approval. We have had a preliminary meeting with the CPC in executive session to begin the conversation about potential use of CPA funds for this purpose and purchase of the land. I believe that tomorrow, the CPC will receive formal application for funding, which will include the total request for appropriation, as well as the supporting documentation and substance to support the total funding amount. Just given the way that the schedules worked out, where the CPC wasn't scheduled to meet until the 27th, but knowing that that did still give sufficient time for them to review and make a recommendation and refer the matter back to the full council before the August 4th meeting, and allowing the committee to meet in the interim, Attorney Goldrosen and I determined that that was appropriate to make the referral this evening, since that is effectively an administrative function that happens, and the substantive review will be taken up by the committee when it meets. I think we were looking at dates that last week in July. And so the information that will be shared or filed with the CPC tomorrow will also be shared, I would imagine, with the council, so that you have it well in advance of both the committee meeting and then the full council meeting for consideration of the appropriation.
So long as you're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we are.
Thank you both. Okay, I just want to thank BKAM tonight, who is with us, Bill Needham, who is reporting these and televising them on the site for residents who can watch it at a later date, as well as the preacher at Ledger, Fred Hanson, is here. I also, Christine Stickney is in attendance with us tonight, listening in. She's the Director of Municipal Planning, and it's municipal planning, sorry. And I don't know if the general public is aware of this, but Steve Leary, the mayor's assistant, is the one who coordinates all these webinars, and so pretty much every meeting of every board that happens, Steve Leary is in attendance, and on the technical side, but he gets to listen in to all of these meetings. So Steve, we appreciate all that you do, making these meetings happen, so thank you so much for all your work on that. And Nicole Tog, the town solicitor and Chief of Staff, thank you as always for being with us tonight and all your expertise and able to answer our questions. With that, is there a motion to adjourn, our next meeting, sorry, is Tuesday, August 4th, at 7:30? With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, vote to adjourn.
Council Erica?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all in attendance, too.